So it's five, thirty-five. I think we have quorum here. So we're missing a few folks, but that is okay. So I'll go ahead and call to order again. I just want to thank everyone for your time, your volunteering to be a part of this commission and for all the good work that we get to do. And just to state that we are Potawatomi land and the Potawatomi Band of Indians. And also before we really, really get started, I wanted to read something that I was just at this virtual event, this One Film Festival, which was an environmental, social, justice film festival out of Chicago. And they had this really amazing agreement that we go to, you know, that we can state as people in this room of what we want to, you know, how we want to behave. Because we are talking about some big issues and hopefully we'll be diving in and allow ourselves to work on the women's healthcare issues and all that. So I just wanted to read this, that as we are here, that we are observing these agreements. To one, put aside your preconceptions. Two, acknowledge your privilege. Three, to internalize what you've learned. Four, to approach the conversation with respect. Five, engage in active listening. And six, use I statements and get comfortable with your own story. So I just wanted to bring that into the room for us as we move forward. So, great. And...
Roll call.
Roll call.
Joanne Inquest.
Here.
Sarah Jones.
Here.
Bonnie Shaw.
Here.
Fay Moore.
Here.
Nicole Pullman.
Here.
Christina Isabel.
Here.
Albertine Allen.
Charlene Livsay.
Here.
Veronica Martin, absent. And Angie Nelson Deutsch, stands.
She has a sinus issue.
Yeah, that seems to be the problem these days. Quorum, what are?
So approval of the minutes, February minutes. Did everyone get a chance to see those? I only printed one copy of that, so sorry. Does anyone need to see that? It's on their phone or your...
I make a motion that we accept the February minutes, February 17, 2022 minutes.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any abstain or minds?
As I mentioned when I was passing them out earlier, same story, different month. We're at the same balance of fifteen thousand, two hundred and twenty-four dollars and seventy-five cents with no new deposits or any disbursements as of March of 2022.
Okay.
I motion to accept the treasurers report.
I second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Great. So I am very excited to, we will have two guest speakers tonight, one is running a little bit later, but really honored that Kathy Dennis could come in and speak to us. I must say that, do we all know Kathy?
Yes, she's a former woman.
I think so.
I feel that's still okay.
Sarah Jones.
Hi, I'm Sarah. What's your name? Sarah Jones. Nice to meet you.
Kathy has been very active in the Michigan City community for a long time. She was on the Women's Commission and was Board President in 2016. She is the reason I got on the commission, she brought me on the commission. And she is currently on the Redevelopment Commission as well as Michigan City Arts. So we're just really excited and she's been working on a really innovative project and I just am excited for you to share it with us.
Okay, thank you, thank you so much for having me. I'm glad to be here. Just an aside, when you read the thing that you had, it reminded me that it was very similar to the, what the Native Americans called the Seven Grandfather Teachings and their love, respect, honesty, bravery, truth, humility, and wisdom. And that's really what many of the Native American tribes still work to honor in their lives. A couple, several years ago now, the Michigan City Art Commission started talking about the history of Michigan City and how influential many of the Native American tribes were to the founding of Michigan City. And yet, the city has never done anything to honor that heritage and to honor our history with Native Americans. So we started to look for a Native American sculptor who could do something that would be placed, at the time, we didn't know where, but, to do a sculpture. And I, you can pass this around, I thought I had more copies of it, I'm sorry, it's a little wiggly. But this sculpture is twenty feet tall and it is done by a sculptor named Jason Quigno, who is an Ashkenazi Indian who works out of Grand Rapids. And his head worked displayed really all over the world. He's very talented. So we talked with him, we went up, a couple of us went up and met with him. We needed to raise about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for this sculpture. And we were on our way to doing that and then the pandemic hit and the mayor decided that he needed the art commission money to run the city. And so our funds were depleted. But in the meantime, we had asked him to make a kit of that sculpture so when we went to different groups to ask for grants, we could show them what this was going to be. And we had already paid him to do that for some odd reason I don't understand. But he tried several times to do it and he never could make one because it's a fairly detailed sculpture. And to try to take a twenty-foot sculpture and make it two feet high was just impossible. So we said to Jason, either you need to return the money to us or can you make something else? And so he said, sure, I'll make something else for you. And he made this beautiful turtle out of white Indiana limestone. In fact, it should be sitting in the hallway when you go out somewhere. And so what we're going to do is use the turtle and it's going to be placed in front of City Hall where the red sculpture is now. And we're going to put a plaque on it which honors the tribes, the indigenous tribes of Indiana. And just a little bit about Native American history in Indiana, does anybody know what the name Indiana means?
Trivia. I thought he was...
I know.
It's land of Indians. And one of the reasons that this piece of land has this name is because as the glaciers receded, Indiana became some of the richest soil in North America in terms of agriculture and it provided great force for hunting and the discovery of, by the Potawatomi's file, going up Trail Creek to the port where it enters Lake Michigan, there was great fishing. So it was wonderfully attractive area for a lot of different tribes. And tribes that were indigenous, and excuse me for reading some of this because it's been a while since I thought about this, were the Potawatomi, Miami, Wia, Delaware, Shawnee, and Eel River. There were many others like the Illinois tribe and the Odawa and the Ojibwe who were also in this area, kind of on and off. But these were the major tribes that were in Indiana. So they, when they founded, what I thought was so interesting, where Lake Michigan comes into Trail Creek, it's a very deep port. And originally, what I read in several books was that it would have been very easy for Michigan City to become Chicago. Because Chicago was also a deep port and at one point, things were looking like shipping might have been easier here. And nobody seems to know why that didn't happen and why all the development of shipping and ports happened in Chicago instead. But there were many trails that kind of crisscrossed across Indiana. And at one point, the governor of Indiana talked with the Potawatomis to cede a hundred feet of land, sort of a Long Trail Creek. And so that became what was called Michigan Road. It's still there. Does anybody know what it is now called? Michigan Boulevard.
It's the same.
It's the same, it's almost exactly the same trail that the Indian tribes and the early white settlers used to move into this area. And then, once they got up here, they intersected with the trails that were coming from Chicago to Detroit. And so people would come up from the south and they could go either to the east or to the west. And so that became, the area of Michigan City really became the apex for a lot of movement of Native Americans. The first white settlers to come here were French traders. And I was laughing today and my husband Carl said, what are you laughing about? But because in, I believe, eighteen-eleven, Tecumseh, who was a Shawnee Indian and his brother, got wind that there were militiamen coming to move them out of Prophetstown, which is near Vincennes, Indiana. And so Tecumseh went all over the country and recruited warriors to come and form a confederacy. And what the United States government did was they surrounded Prophetstown and they surrounded this confederacy. And I thought, maybe Putin took that idea from us. But eventually, the thousand militiamen just swarmed over the Confederate Indian tribes that were there and they totally burned down Prophetstown and they burned down their food storage places. And so the Indians then left. In eighteen-thirty, the United States government enacted the Indian Removal Act. And that began the removal of Native Americans from most of the area, east of the Mississippi to the west, where, you know, they had, the Indians were used to being farmers and hunters and fishermen. And then they were moved into land that was very barren to them, didn't have the potential for doing the, for survival in the ways that they noted. One of the best known, I think, tragedies that happened in Indiana was the Trail of Death. And that happened in eighteen-thirty-seven in Marion, Indiana. The government told the people of the tribe that they needed to meet in the local church. And all of the people were in the church and all of a sudden, they were surrounded by a hundred militiamen. And that became the forced march or the Trail of Death from there to Kansas. And of the hundred and seventy-nine people that were on this forced march, forty-four of them died, most of them elderly people and young children. They died of lack of water, lack of food, and then the very hot weather that they encountered on the trip there. Because they had, they didn't let them go home and bring anything. They just, whatever they had on their backs is what they were forced to march with. And then after they were gone, white settlers were given the land that these people had built houses on, had started farms on. And so that was, that was a really sad part. But it's something that has happened, happened all over the country where Indian tribes were moved. And eventually, really only the Potawatomis and the Miamis after the eighteen-thirties remained in Indiana. The Pocagin Band, which some of you have probably heard of, who are headquartered in Duwajiak, but they call La Porte part of their homeland territory. They had, their chief was named Leopold Pocagin. And he had allowed missionaries to come into the band and that Indian tribe became Christians. And because of their Christianity, they were not forced to leave Indiana. And they were really the only tribe that was left in Indiana for posterity. And it was because they had accepted Christianity. So they are still there, they're very active, they're much more active probably in Michigan. They have a large foundation. I know we tried to see if we could get a grant, but they, they don't fund anything in Indiana.
Didn't they just get their national recognition for a tribe?
Yeah, not too, right.
Like this past year?
Not too long ago. And if you've ever been to Duwajiak, their tribal lands are amazing. They're very, very environmental, aware of things. They have an area that looks kind of like a suburban settlement, a beautiful, new houses. If you are over sixty-five and you can't afford anymore to live where you've been living or rent, you can live in those houses for all the rest of the days of your life. Or I think, it may have changed, but when I was aware of it, it was like two hundred and twenty-five dollars a month. They have their own medical services right on the tribe. They have a beautiful museum. They have a lot of, they have one huge room that's all environmentally correct for keeping artifacts. And they have collected many, many artifacts from hundreds of years ago. Just a couple of quick stories and then I'll be quiet. I live, and Christina and I both live out at Triad Farm. There's an elderly man that lives across the road in a farmhouse on Eastwood and he stops over occasionally. And he tells me stories about what it was like to live in this area in the early years. And the first story he told me was before they cleared one of the lands for farming, it was a wooded area and within these woods was a maple tree that kind of grew in the shape of a heart. And he said that there was a band of, he doesn't know whether they were Miami or Potawatomis, he doesn't know what tribe they belong to, but there was a band of Indians that lived along Beck's Creek. And that they buried their people around this tree. And so he said, the day that they came to clear the field to make it farmland, he was out there with his shovel trying to see if he could find any bones and he couldn't find any bones. But he said that the Indians in the area were, there were quite a few of them. And I know that when they were building houses at Triad, one of the workmen who was very interested in Indian culture would come over and he found lots of arrowheads and things when they were building the houses. So that's kind of my real local information from around here. Any questions?
Well, tell us about the May event and what's going on in May.
Okay. In May is when we will have the celebration to install the turtle. And it'll be First Friday in May. We hope to have a group of dancers from the Pocagin Band come and dance and some storytellers and to really make it a celebration. And then after we have the sculpture in place, we have, the Horizon Bank was generous and has supported this project. And we asked them for some funding to put a historic, kind of a historic marker on this piece to talk about our history in Michigan City with Native American tribes. We should have enough money left from that, that we're hoping to talk with the Master Gardener Club to put in some native plant gardens on either side of the sculpture. And then our plan is that the, hopefully the schools will want to bring schoolchildren and we will be able to invite people from the Pocagin Band. There are some Miamis that are living near Michigan City to come and talk with schoolkids and let them see the sculpture and what's, and hear some of the history of Michigan City.
That's fantastic.
Where is this at again? Where is this at again?
Right in front of City Hall.
Okay.
Either there or it'll be at the library. We're still kind of in flux because of the, they had a grant to have the dancers come. So our ultimate goal though, is to get this twenty-foot sculpture and have it there as a much bigger symbol. And maybe, and keep the turtle there also, but to have this, this big sculpture. The sculpture, if you noticed, has a turtle at the base and it has flames going up from it. And the flames are representative of the Potawatomis, who are the firekeepers. And so that's why you see the flames. And then all of the other animals are indicative of animals that were present in this area when it was inhabited by the different Native American tribes. There's an American Indian Council for Indiana located in Indianapolis who has helped us and the Pocagin Band has helped us because we certainly didn't want to, and somebody asked me at a meeting, you know, Kathy, why don't you write what's on the historic plaque because you know some of the history? And at first I said, sure. And then I got on and I thought, are you crazy? You're not, you know, you're not Native American. This is something that should be written by Native Americans, not by me. And so that was when I got in touch with some other people. We decided to make it more simple because if it was written by, let's say, the Pocagins, it only, you know, they're, they're Potawatomis. There were more than Potawatomis here, so the plaque is going to be more indicative of all the indigenous tribes that were in this area.
What time you say the event?
I don't know, we're not quite set yet. But it'll be sort of in concert with First Friday, so, which I think always starts at five.
Five.
Yeah.
Great. And you're funded and fully financed?
We are so far. So far. If anybody has ideas, Bonnie, I'll probably be giving you a call to fund this, I think it's an amazing piece of sculpture.
It's gorgeous.
Yeah.
It is.
Yes, it would be a real, I think, asset to Michigan City to have something like that. So I am hoping that we can inspire some of the foundations and businesses to contribute to making this a possibility for Indiana.
Well, I like the idea that you guys are also including an education program with that for the kids. And, you know, I was talking with Albertine, just getting about the African-American history in our area and making sure that we really are sharing that and how are we sharing that information?
Great. Oh, I know, one of the other things I was going to tell you that I thought was so interesting is that most of these tribes were governed by two councils, a men's council and a women's council. And women were really had and played an important role in the governance of the tribes. So they would have governance over like childcare, food storage, food production, health, those kinds of things. And the men were more over other, you know, the other issues. So I thought that, I found that very interesting and I see that all of a sudden, we have more women who are running for office in Indiana, which I think is really important. And it would be nice to have more of a balance like the Native tribes had initially, so.
Excellent. Any other questions for Kathy?
Thank you so much for having me.
You're welcome. It's been an exciting project because it's just something that has never happened. And I don't know that any other group in Michigan City has ever talked about doing something for this.
Not since I've been here.
Not that I know of. I think it will certainly add to the pride of our city.
I hope so. I hope so. And allow people who live in the city to understand what kind of heritage they have in living here and how important the land is and certainly how important Trail Creek is to the history of...
Is there a lot of, like, so, because I used to live out in Michiana Shores and I've always heard stories of like, oh, this was a Native American meeting rock and these were very important spaces within Michiana Shores. Have you come across those?
No. It's hard to find real local kinds of information. There are lots of books that have been written on Indians in Indiana history or something like that, but there's not, there's not tons of stuff that's written about Michigan City and, you know, Michiana, Long Beach area. But I'm sure that's probably true because really the, where Trail Creek entered, enters the Lake Michigan, became such an important area for them that I wouldn't be at all surprised that there were lots of things that were happening in those areas, so.
And the little bit of research that I did was more about the land and like the, like, how people, the Indians use the land as not, like, they would get certain medicinal herbs from the dunes and then they would get certain, you know, herbs from another location so that they really spread out where their resources were in the land.
Interesting.
That's been interesting research for me, just what plants and where.
Yeah. That is really interesting.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's amazing how resourceful and the depth of knowledge that a lot of the tribes had about hunting and fishing and health and care and all the different kinds of food storage over the winter so that they would survive. And really, in lots of ways, we've lost a lot of that. And they were probably the first conservationists, you know, that we know of because they had to protect the land because it was their source for life. And so they really were important to the conservation movement, I think, initially.
I think they showed the settlers how to survive when they came to this country.
Yes.
Without them, they would not have survived. They taught them about planting and how to use the different medicinal herbs to heal themselves and stuff. So that's a part of history that we don't really get in the school anymore. It's just a lost history. Not only in Michigan City, but South Bend had a huge Potawatomi tribe and a Miami tribe too. Certain parts of South Bend are, all the streets are Native American streets, so.
Huh.
And part of South Bend used to be a lake. It was Beck Lake and that land was so rich with, for planting and stuff, so they just moved about. I can't remember who the first, the first settler was here that was a Native American or African-American or whatever he was, was desirable or something like that. I got that information from...
Sure. Right. Well, and...
Yeah, in Chicago, yeah.
I forget, I think it's like, what, forty percent of African-Americans have some Native American, American in their blood. Because when they ran away as slaves, many of them ran to the different tribes and the tribes were very accepting of them and they became part of the tribe and intermarried. And I know, I know my husband is Cherokee and Blackfoot and African-American, obviously. And I think that's very common. And, you know, he tells stories of his great-great-grandmother and having hair below her waist and it was the kid's job to catch rainwater and wash her hair and, you know. They learned a lot of, I think, folklore and things from their experiences, living with native, different Native American tribes and changed some of their culture to fit into that. And I would assume that the Native American tribes got a lot from the culture of African-Americans who became incorporated into the tribal groups. So it's a fascinating history and there's a lot of different authors that have written exciting books about it. Some of them are fiction, but there's a lot of historical truth within the fiction stories and things, so it's great. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We need to go home. Company for the past...
So in terms of our next guest speaker, she's running, she's, I thought we were on Zoom, so she'll be here in a little bit. So we will just move on to the next new business item then.
Did I just see a review to attend this call?
Oh, actually, hey, because we ended up getting two speakers. So then I was like, wow.
She's a teness.
Okay, okay. We don't need that.
I didn't get, oh, so you revise it.
Couple of students. I'm doing much better. Procedure, so, yeah. On the lookout.
Yeah. So then our new business, as we continue our, our women's healthcare research and, and work. And as I've been having kind of conversations with some of you and just trying to grasp what it is that we want to, to do, I started to think about the potential of, and something Albertine and I talked about, like a women's healthcare gathering. Oh, here we go. Hi, how are you?
Good to have you here.
Good. Thank you so much for coming in.
Thank you for having me. I'm sorry to be late.
Oh, no problem. You're actually just on time for the moment.
Yeah, perfectly on time. I printed off her, oh, I have two pages. My daughter used all the staples, so I cannot say.
Yeah, baby.
So it's two pages.
So it's two pages.
Yeah, it's two pages. She's like, where's all the staples? Do you have the stapler?
So this will be great. So we're very excited. I will let Nicole introduce you, but just so you know that we are in a kind of period of research and kind of trying to reconnect with our community and find out what is going on and with the focus on women's healthcare. So, and, and health issues in our, our community. So we're trying to reach out to people to kind of feel out what's, what you're working on, what you're doing and how we can understand that more.
Fantastic. So, okay. So I would like to present Dr. Tammy Bun. She is the new executive director of Dune Brook. Thank you very much. I'm pleased to be here. Thank you so much. I recognize one face, Albertine. So glad to see you. Would it be okay if everybody just told me their names in a little bit?
So I'm Nicole.
Christina Isabel, the new chair.
Thank you. Paymore.
Pastor.
Huh? Oh.
Shirley Lovesey.
Hi.
Bonnie Schaff.
Hello.
I'm uncover, Joanne Anquist.
Hi, nice to meet you.
Sarah Jones.
Hi, Sarah. Nice to meet you. This is so timely with what you're doing, so I'm really just appreciative to have this time with you. It's, you know, with taking over as the executive director of Dune Brook, my background is being a pediatric dentist. And I've been a pediatric dentist for 15 years. And part of that, I worked right across the street at Michigan City Pediatric Dentistry. So I grew up in La Porte. And so I'm, you think you're familiar with an area. As a child, you obviously don't see things the same way as when you're an adult and you are actually looking at some of these things. So my background as a pediatric dentist really serves me well at Dune Brook because if you're talking about the health of teeth, you're talking about overall health. If you're talking about the health of families, what are you talking about? You're talking about the health of the mom and the health of the children. So the more general you can go, really, the more you can kind of catch. So I don't look at teeth anymore, but I really look at health. So, and I know Albertine from, I have a small, little nonprofit organization that I started that we do pregnancy and infant oral health education. And Albertine helped me get that going and served on our board. So being able to focus on a time during pregnancy is great as far as prevention and getting out ahead of a lot of things. Anybody that's a parent knows when that baby is born, time goes so fast and you're so tired and all of a sudden they're a year old. And the more that you have to go back and relearn or when you go to a visit and find out you've been doing things wrong, it's, it's a lot, just on a day-to-day basis to keep up with things. And then if you have to do things differently or change a habit or whatever it might be, that's just putting everybody in a disadvantage. So prevention is really a focus of, that has always been a focus of mine. And at Dune Brook, obviously with our mission, every child safe, healthy and happy through the prevention and intervention of child abuse. So are all of you somewhat familiar with Dune Brook?
Yes.
Okay. So this here really, there's a lot of numbers type things here, but the purpose of those numbers is really just to be able to say that the issues that we're seeing in La Porte County as far as child abuse, you know, in, on our intervention side, the Child Advocacy Center, which provides the place for parents and families to come if they've had suspected child abuse. They come for the forensic interviewing. And so it's a multi-disciplinary team of people based of people that work at Dune Brook, that run the Child Advocacy Center, a family advocate, a child advocate, and then law enforcement and people from DCS, all kinds of people come together for these interviews. And the interviewers are trained in techniques that they don't go to the event immediately. They talk with the child. They get a baseline of what this child is able to describe, the amount of detail they might be able to provide. And then they start talking about what happened. And it's done in such a compassionate, caring way. Obviously, that's a traumatic time to have to talk about something like that. And while they're talking with the child, there's people meeting with the parents because if you have parents that are dealing with finding out that something has gone on and then also trying to come to terms with that, they have a healing process too. So all of that goes on during interview time and then after. And in 2021, they conducted 398 interviews. So they were very busy. The pandemic never shut down the Child Advocacy Center. They pivoted immediately to be able to still give those interviews. So that tells us that there's things that we can look at, obviously, if we're having that amount of interviews in La Porte. And that's, that's La Porte County. So on the prevention side of things, a lot of our focus is getting to moms during pregnancy with the Healthy Families Program. Are any of you familiar with the Healthy Families Home Visiting Program? It's, it's fantastic. I have a three-year-old and thinking back to that time period of after she was born, to have somebody come to the house and all they care about is just seeing how you're doing and checking in on you and checking on the baby and, and bringing you things, that's a benefit to anybody. Because a mom, she needs that support so that she in turn can support her new baby. And if she's not supported, then obviously we know what happens. It's difficult to support a baby when you're not being supported. So the Healthy Families Program engages women during pregnancy, all the way through the fifth birthday of the child. They provide home visits. They're trained in different health areas as far as what to look for during pregnancy. They're trained in looking at some of the risk factors for different abuse issues for as far as abuse in the home, substance abuse, different risk factors for how is this mom going to be able to be supported during pregnancy? What kind of support system does she have? Where can we help her with different things that are available to her? The Healthy Families also has at Dune Brook and in, I have some folders of information here. We have a family depot and different organizations make donations to the depot. We keep it stocked full of diapers, wipes, toys, you name it. You walk into this and it's, it reminds me of what happened. This, I thought, this must have been where Toys R Us came because, you know, it's, it's this huge room and it's so well organized. And, I mean, they've got things in there that a mom can come for a birthday present if she doesn't have, you know, all those things that just as a mom to be able to give and what that does for you. And so during the pandemic, right now, visits are virtual, so there's not a lot of the in-person. But the home visitors can come and pick up. For example, just the other day, there was a request for laundry detergent and dish soap. Those seem like small things, but again, if that's missing in your day and you can't wash the three things that you have for your child to wear and you can't wash the dishes, that's a big deal. So just to have that delivered again, oh my gosh. So that is all with points. So they do different things to earn points that they can spend then in the depot with taking different classes or following through with home visits. And the neat thing about Healthy Families too is some of the things that they measure, Healthy Families is a national program, each individual location. So Dune Brook houses Healthy Families of La Porte County. And you have to go through a accreditation process. It's a big deal to be able to have a Healthy Families and maintain it. And everything is evidence-based. They collect all kinds of data just to make sure that what they're doing is working. One of the things that they have recently found with our area too is 90, 90% of the families are up to date with their immunizations around a year old. That is way higher than the national average. And even if you're, you could put aside if you're pro or con immunization, but this also means that they're following through with visits to the doctor for those things. They're seeing a doctor. The other side of that then is 98% of these women have a medical home established for their baby. That's way higher than the national average as well. So with the support of somebody advocating for them about it's time for another visit, how can we work this out, whatever it is, they're, they're getting information, they're getting the support and they're following through with those visits. Those early visits mean so much. You know, that first year, there's a lot of visits. And if they're keeping up with all of those, that's just a really good start to everything. So much changes in that first year. There's a lot of information and, you know, I'm a pediatric dentist, I'm a healthcare provider and I like to say I've learned a lot of what I know about that first year on the job, not as a pediatric dentist, but as a mom. And I have a lot of years of school in and I didn't know everything. And so just people that can help with that, getting that preventive information is just so important. And some of the things Healthy Families can also help with is assisting parents with employment, getting them situated with, you know, different things, helping them with that housing. That was a big one during the pandemic with some issues with evictions and things. And also helping them to enroll in higher education. We have one home visitor that recently told us about her mom that has, has started to take college classes. Now again, is that related just to the home visitor? But that support is what, you know, helps you to realize that you can reach a little higher. So Healthy Families is something that's available regardless of income. Obviously, you don't pay for this, so it's a service that is available. The hospitals allow the home visitors to come into the hospitals to talk to moms about the program. Sometimes people sign up from the hospital, sometimes this is prenatally through WIC or different offices, but there's a lot of connections with that. So that is, to me, the biggest thing for women in our community, across the board. You know, this isn't just related to socioeconomic status, but that foundation, that support that we all need to be able then to be a human being and then be a, you know, a professional, to be a mom, to be a wife. But that support, whatever that looks like, is, is the piece that has to be there to help all of us. The other programs that Dune Brook have, we have a parent and family education department that offers parenting classes that are based in a curriculum called Nurturing Parenting. And this curriculum is great as far as, it's not just the parenting classes that tells you, okay, this is how many diapers to expect, how many, you know, whatever it is. It also goes along with helping the parent realize that you've got to assess where you are personally to be able to then figure out how to react in different situations. So teaching people that you can have things in place before you need to get to that step of spanking or whatever it might be. And that's a good skill for anyone, parent or not, to be able to have those things in place for yourself that, okay, I can feel where I'm getting to this point, I need to step back or whatever that might be. And so that's empowering for parents. And we just graduated the first group of students from La Porte High School, expected parents, both the mom and the fathers. So it was a great experience to see that in motion for that group. And so that is something that is ongoing with the quarter just changed, so they've identified some more students that would be eligible for that. What a great group of people to app, to offer more support to instead of, you know, just ostracizing. But Heather, who teaches these courses, just said, the group that she had just absorbed every word. They were excited to be engaged by somebody that didn't, first of all, you know, she didn't look at their situation. She just looked at them as expected parents and gave them that support. So that was really fantastic. And the other, the third program is our Body Safety Program. If any of you are involved with schools, you may have heard about that. So the Body Safety Program is something that teaches kids how to be empowered enough to know what is right and wrong when it comes to their body. And also how to identify somebody that could help them if they think something has happened. So that program in the school system in La Porte County, this is incredible. This is one person that gives these presentations, Sarah Hoyt, and she is just dynamic, if any of you have heard.
They're so great.
What's that?
The, the Body Safety is a great.
Have you heard?
Because I used to work at King of the Land.
Okay, yeah. So. Can you guys come in then? It's amazing. So 11,981 students in La Porte County heard her presentations last year. And there were, she says on average, after she presents to a school, there's usually about eight people that will want to talk about, I think something's happened and I need to talk to somebody. So again, that's, you know, support for our fellow people in this community that, you know, as a parent, you hope you know everything that's going on, but you're not with your child 24/7. And to know that they're being empowered also to know what's right and wrong and also that it's okay to say something, that's just another way really to support. So these, these types of support, again, if you think just very narrowly about child abuse, you might think about just the end result of that. And so how do we attack that? It's the same as, again, with my background of, I don't look at just teeth anymore. So the things in the community that I really have seen over the years of practicing here as a pediatric dentist and now just as the executive director of Dune Brook are when parents have to make changes at home, the support to be able to do that. For example, if they come to the dentist and find out that their child has a mouthful of cavities now and they've got infection and things have to be taken care of, they get sent home with some instructions about what to do. But that ongoing support of helping with making changes at home, and I, I don't really know what that looks like, to be honest, but the fact that being open about that everybody learns that they have to make changes, but how do you go about that? And offering the support and also a way to be able to have help with making changes. Sometimes, you know, with social media and different things, you get the idea that everybody else is perfect and other homes are perfect and you're the only one that has been told that you're not doing things right or that you're the only one that feels overwhelmed at times or, you know, that's not helping anybody, obviously. And just being real as, I'm, I'm fine with saying I didn't have all the answers as a parent. And I don't see that child abuse is just some people, that that can happen. Unfortunately, all of us can be pushed to a point and it's learning about how to deal with before you get to that point. And so with making change in your home, with feeling supported in your home, feeling supported at work, feeling supported with childcare options, you know, all of those things that, that village, I guess, that, you know, just helping with that in general. Access to care in our area is another issue for, we have a large percentage of people in our community that have state insurance. And it can be difficult to find providers that accept the state insurance. And when you can't find care for your child, that is another big factor, or even for yourself. Many times as a child, if you have the state insurance Medicaid, it is easier to find providers than as an adult with the Healthy Indiana Plan. That can be very tricky too, because not all, more providers will see children and not adults. And so that's another area that goes back to that support with, if there's making change, if it's a healthcare provider or an office or whoever provides that support. But access to care, that's a health equity, that is a huge issue that many people face. If you cannot find a place that will see you on top of whatever problem you're having, that's, that's not a good place to be. So with making this a priority to bring this out into the open and making sure that in La Porte County that we. and making sure that at La Porte County that we are dealing with health equity issues, I think is, would be a big step forward.
Especially like with choices, I think. Like they have limited choices and that's the only doctor you have.
Yeah.
And if, you know, especially for pregnant moms, if you don't have that connection with that doctor, then.
You may not follow through with visits.
Yeah. Or your pregnancy, you may, you know, it's a stressful environment for you and that's not good and.
So how many, how many people do you have working at the facility? Or how many people are on your staff?
There's about thirty people. So it's a good sized organization and it's grown. It's been in existence for over thirty years. So it's a solid, solid organizations and I could take no credit for anything. I just want it to be a well-run machine, so.
And where do you see like the, like a growth point for you guys at this moment? Like what is your programs or how are you really going to get out now that COVID is blessing or is holding on us? So how, what will be your?
So Dune Brook had been closed for the most part during the pandemic. The Child Advocacy Center remained open with interviews, but a lot of the, there were play groups and parenting groups and things that happened there that everything just went virtual. So we're starting to slowly reopen to those things, taking into account that we still have a child population that is not able to be vaccinated. So, you know, being aware of that. But the, the biggest things now are looking at these programs that are doing great things and how can we be better? With the healthy families, home visitors, we're looking at getting training so that they can have lactation education as well, because that's, that's another big factor for a mom if she's having issues with breastfeeding and can't seem to get that support. So if the home visitors also had lactation training and could offer that, that would be a fantastic thing to also be able to offer. Also having more training in postpartum depression, recognizing those kind of issues. They do work with a licensed social worker that helps with some of those issues. They have supervision with him and then also he can make recommendations. None of them are specifically trained to be able to give therapy, but they're trained in warning signs so that they can help with giving somebody the care that they need. Those are the kind of things we're also working on. We had gotten some grant funding prior to my starting at Dune Brook to for Title V funding with the turn on child health to develop a training for the home visitors on pregnancy and infant oral health. And so we're doing, we'll be training the home visitors next month on that whole program. And that actually is something that, there really doesn't exist that component to other home visiting programs to be able to help with that component of it. So those are, that's a big win for us to be able to offer that as well.
Yes. So in La Porte County, do you find more women going back to breastfeeding? Or do you guys encourage the breastfeeding?
Yeah, the biggest time, definitely encouraging the breastfeeding, you know, with the, all the obvious benefits of breastfeeding. The biggest issues are, you know, with, for a mom that needs, has to return to work at six weeks, then making sure that she knows that she can advocate for breastfeeding space for.
Right.
The job, the job doesn't happen.
Yes.
There's moms that support that, but.
But that's an area. Yeah, that's, that's a big one.
It's a challenge.
It is. It's definitely a challenge. When I went back to work after my daughter was born and I had a busy day of patients and to stop and breastfeed, you know, it's, it's a challenge. And it wasn't that I was told I couldn't, but if I go breastfeed, then, you know, I'm making people wait an extra half hour when I'm already behind. And, you know, so you take that on personally, but providing the support so that it's okay that you need to breastfeed and making a space so that it's not something that, you know, you're doing in the bathroom stall, which probably everybody who's pumped before has done that. So that's a big one. And then also with, if there's any issues that happen right away after birth, you know, if you don't get your questions answered, the next feeding's in two hours, maybe sooner. So you go through enough of those times, then you're just going to turn to formula because you are afraid that you're not feeding your baby, right? So lactation services, making those available, you know, making sure that a mom knows that if she is having issues, that that's what lactation consultants do and making sure that she's, has access to those.
That's great, especially since I know like the hospitals typically have only had part-time lactation services available. So if you give birth, you might get luckier, you might not. So it's nice to have that support before, during pregnancy.
Yeah.
So then you know who to call.
So you have that lined up, you know, that, that other name on the fridge. Okay, so if this happens, this is who I know I can call. Yeah.
How do people find your services? I know in the past, sometimes it's court ordered that people would go to parenting classes. Is that still the method or?
Some of it is, you're correct. So the nurturing parenting program, that is something that is recognized by the courts as beneficial for the Family Recovery Court, the Family Wellness Court. Those are ones that this parenting program is of benefit for parents that are going through different things with Department of Child Services. The other way to find those services are though, just that they've been recommended. It doesn't have to be through the court. It doesn't have to be that it's been mandated. I've gone through the curriculum and honestly, I would have loved to take the class.
So I was gonna say, so is it something that, I was a teen mom and I never heard of your services. I have six kids and before recently, I've never heard. And is there a way that a parent who might not have a court order or might not need, have someone who recommended them come in and just say, hey, I need help. What, what services do you have that, for just those parents that are young and just don't work? Old and just don't know or never had kids before and just don't work? I'm still running into things I don't know.
We have a lot of pre-nutrition that, that have Dune Brook information available. And also it's given out at the high school to students. I can't think of the name of the class that they used to give this out. And then we did an even start to, the parents were given Dune Brook information. And also in that information was breastfeeding and the importance of breastfeeding and what, and how it watered off some of the germs or whatever and infections that the child might have. So it's been out there forever.
Yeah. And we, it, it's always amazing how people have found the information. But those that are just, you know, want to have that parenting class, there's some information in here that I'll pass out in April. April is Child Abuse Awareness Month. And so the nurturing parenting is doing what they're calling a drop-in class. So this is just a Zoom class. You can see if this might be something for you. And so there's some information on that, but also just website, social media.
Well, I guess, cause you're talking about the, the importance of prevention. And if you don't have that court order or a recommendation from whomever, you're already at that point where you needed prevention. So what, as parents, like how can we have those parents who before they get to have, needing that court order, get help? Like as an educator, if I have, you know, a student who I've noticed is having, a parent is having a hard time with certain aspects of early childhood, can I say to that parent, hey, you know, here's a resource? Can they come to you and, and still participate in your services without that court order?
Yes. There are some people that, I know this from when, when I was a practicing dentist, I would make referrals to Dune Brook just because I was familiar with their services. And some parents say, do you think I'm abusing my child? So you have to be very clear that, you know, it's, we are a, a child abuse prevention center, but our programs, it's the going general. Preventing child abuse is being informed as a parent is, you know, not doing things in a certain way that can lead to that, but the prevention side is prevention of everything. And that's something that, just to be careful about that. But yes, in your packets, there's information on phone numbers, social media things.
You'd be surprised how many parents will come like at conferences and they're in tears. They're like, I just don't know what else to do. What can I do? And I'm like, hmm, let me see what resources I can find.
Nurturing Parenting too, is really designed around that communication for parents too with, it goes all the way through eighteen. So if there's communication issues.
Oh, wow.
Mm-hmm, yeah. About how to communicate better between both the parent and the child. Dealing with, it also gives a lot of information about milestones or what to expect. But then also brain development and how do you communicate? You know, I have what they call the three major right now, that communication. And so, you know, just to be prepared that it's not personal. It's not, this is what's going on. And then how to deal with that. And, you know, for a parent that is home most of the day, like a lot of people were during the pandemic and you're exposed to that over and over and over and over and you're not sure what to do. Anybody can get frustrated. So the nice thing too about the, Heather, the program director, she can basically design a program around a group of people. So if you have a group that you think could really benefit, she can put together choosing different topics that would really be ones that they could benefit from hearing. The whole curriculum, it can be a six-week long endeavor to get through, but you can pick and choose also which ones might be really applicable to them too. I can give you her information. It might be worth a conversation with her, just so you know exactly what you could tell people as far as these classes.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And my other, other question, what is the diversity of your staff that does go out? You have a broad range of industries working with you and.
We do.
Languages and.
We are fortunate that we have Span, uh, two Spanish-speaking home visitors and Spanish is their first language. We also have a Brazilian-speaking home visitor. She says, she's fluent in both Spanish and English and Portuguese. Brazilian, yes. From Brazil, yeah. She says there's not a lot of call for Portuguese, but she has. So there's that diversity. There's also the diversity of, there are two home visitors that were healthy family clients. And that's how they learned about the, the program. And so now they're home visitors. So, and one of them became a client when she was in college and she now has her masters and is, you know, a home visitor. And she loves to engage people in that story of, you know, I use these services. I believe them so much, I got a masters and do this because I believe, you know, able to say that this really is beneficial.
Yeah.
So, yeah. We have a couple of home visitors right now as well that are getting masters and they're masters in social work. And the nice thing about the home visitors, their schedule, they set up their own schedule. So it is, lends itself well to a, you know, academic schedule as well.
Any other thoughts or questions? This was really interesting. Fantastic. Thank you so much for sharing the information and.
Thank you so much.
You know, we just did, gathered with that.
Absolutely. Thank you for having me.
You did such a great job, even through like, you know, the COVID.
Oh, my gosh. And again, we take no credit for any of this. But literally when they shut down, they did not miss it, miss a day and just got things up and running immediately so that the services could continue.
I'm gonna take my eye off the leave, so sorry. I will say up until recently, I hadn't heard of you and I have recently been involved with you on a parent aspect of it. And your staff were very helpful and.
That's great to know.
Did a lot of help for me, so.
That's wonderful.
So now I know of you, but. I very appreciate that of them.
I learned of Dune Brook when I was practicing as a pediatric dentist and I had a child come in that I just knew something was going on, but I didn't know what to do. I didn't know, I knew I could call DCS, but I didn't know other steps before that. What do I do? What, what could I do? And I just happened to meet a board member of Dune Brook and they talked about what they did. And I said, okay, can I call and talk to somebody? And this was the exact same day. It was just by chance. Yes. So I called, they talked me through it. They listened to the scenario. It's confidential, obviously. I'm not violating any HIPAA. They said, yeah, this is, this is what I would recommend doing. And I, I called numerous times and got that insight. A lot of times that's just that, again, that support when you're not sure what to do in any situation, to be able to talk to somebody that's gonna listen and not sway you, but just say, this is what I'm hearing you say and it might be a good idea to call. So it felt really good to have that reference there to help with. It's never pleasant to have to make those calls, but it's better to err on the side, I think, of making the call.
You're right.
Rather than not, so. Excuse me. Sorry, excuse me. So these are some folders of information. And then the pinwheel is the symbol of child abuse awareness. So anybody who wants to display a pinwheel, feel free to take one or two or three. I have extra, I don't know if you want to keep some for other members.
Yeah.
And the last, since I just started, I don't have business cards yet, but the last slide is my contact information. Please call me if you want to pass it on to anybody else. That's fine too. So I'm here to be a resource.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. We appreciate that. I'm sure you'll do a wonderful job.
Oh, thank you. Thank you.
Well, great, we're a little bit.
Over.
Over our time with having two guest speakers, but I'm really glad that we got to hear both.
Oh, absolutely.
Tammy here. So is, do we want to continue on a little longer or do we want to forego?
We should continue.
Can we do, okay, great. So to be honest, we can, in new business, instead of like really discussing these things, what really I'm proposing needs to happen is that there's a subcommittee. Creating two different subcommittees. One to kind of gather these ideas of the women's healthcare and this potential of a symposium or gathering of local health leaders to create conversation within our community. I've also done a lot of research lately on just some national programs. And also a woman in Chicago who produced a really incredible art exhibit that deals with healthcare and they now have a touring show and educators and can do lectures. And, and to be honest, I performed at the opening of that event. It was at the Bridgeport Art Center in Chicago and it was a very powerful exhibit. There's unbelievable images and stories and connections with artists. So, so definitely that will be just one subgroup of the women's healthcare and kind of really looking at what we're, we want to do. And then the second subcommittee would be for the August twenty-sixth, celebrating ten years of the Women's Commission, as well as that's the Women's Equality Day. So we've lost some of our crew here to determine if anyone wants to be on the subcommittee.
I'll definitely work on the August twenty-sixth, celebrating ten years of the Women's Commission.
Great.
I would like, I'm interested in that one too.
Okay.
And it looks like same Shar is interested in that one as well.
Which one did you choose?
The second one, celebrating, um, 10 years of the Women's Commission.
I can help with the women's healthcare.
Great.
I'm sorry, where's the list we're looking at?
On your agenda. Did you get that agenda?
Well, I've got it on my phone, but.
Oh, you have it on your phone.
I always have an extra one, but I can, um, you can look at my.
Yeah.
There's a women's healthcare one and then there's the celebrating women's commission event. Um, so are you picturing an event for the women's healthcare one?
Yeah.
Oh, I'll work on the women's healthcare.
Great. Well, tossing around ideas of how we can, you know, again, create threads through the community, but then also maybe have some speakers that could be really inspiring as well.
Yeah.
And, you know, then it'll help us also determine, although she mentioned a number of things that we could be researching or looking at in terms of supporting more.
We're doing women's healthcare this month. They'll end up, um, this coming Sunday at the church.
Oh, really?
We found that we had women, young ladies from the church that went into medical field. We have a gynecologist.
All right. Are you all right, Bethel?
Mm-hmm. Yeah. So we've been celebrating a different one each month.
That's so good.
Yes. Each year, you know?
Yeah.
So, um, we started out with black history and then we figured, well, black history is all year. So we, we're gonna continue with that, but then we're honoring the, the young ladies in the church this month that have left Bethel and gone on to greater things.
That's amazing. That is so good.
We had two doctors. Maybe three. And then we have two attorneys that have left Bethel and gone on to, yes. And then we have one that's in, uh, security for the government, cyber, cyber, something like that.
Cybersecurity, yeah.
Yeah. It's like me and her.
Well, and it really is important to acknowledge our community, right? The only way that we can get more pride in our, our community and do something.
And if the parent is there, they get up and read about their child. And then we put a picture on our bulletin board and then we put their stuff underneath it. So it's been really, really interesting.
We need to do that on a broader Michigan City plan. So. Okay. So we definitely have at least three people on the celebrating 10 years of the Women's Commission. And then Nicole and Albertine, I mean, I will be on that as well. Um, great. Let's send it to that. Do we, I'm sorry, does that need to be more formal?
No, no, we don't have to, no.
Great.
And you'll call the ones that's not here and see which committee they want to work on.
Yeah. Terrific. Um.
I'm sorry, I would like to see somebody's list. I'm not.
Oh, not getting it.
The right, right, uh. Is it on the second agenda?
It's on the first page.
We're just talking about the.
We're not used to in-person meetings.
Right. We're not used to. Have us way off base.
It's like a read, readjustment.
What do you want us to do, uh, with all these? What, what is it we're expecting to?
So, um, for, well, the easy one to talk about would be the, um, 10-year celebration first. That looking at what our options are, I, I do have the past budgets that I included, um, which roughly we're spending close to $5,000 and we generally make about, um, four to $5,000. With that. So it'd be nice to kind of really hit a, I don't know if the 10-year, celebrating 10 years of the Women's Commission is the actual fundraiser or if that is a set, like one touch point, like we have four touch points in the community potentially. We have the Naomi Anderson opening this following, this weekend.
This week.
Um, this weekend. And then, um, if we can create, um, a, a local symposium or gathering of healthcare, um, community for conversation, is another. And then if we do the August 26th, um, celebrating 10 years of the commission, honoring our, our past chairs, um, I think we can do something really special there. And it's also what has been our equality luncheon. That is my thing. And then I, I really think that we're not really gonna know what we're raising funds for until after we have kind of some more research done. So to, to say that by August, we're gonna be ready for a fundraiser when we're, we might not even know what programs are, what we're interested in really supporting. So maybe in the fall becomes the actual real fundraiser. If we determine that's what we need, right? I mean, um, right now we have 15,000.
If we have a fundraiser, we can't spend five and make four.
Exactly. I, I mean, my, I would love it if we could spend three and make 10, you know, like what it, like, and so that, that, that August 26th committee could also be talking about that. What are our other ways of raising money without spending a lot of money?
Get over for a good venue.
Yeah. And so what, what could that look like? I also think it's really important if we know that we have, you know, people will give more if they know what they're giving.
Yeah.
Courts.
Right.
And to just give to us right now, and we're, we're, you know, we've given, we've done amazingly beautiful work in giving out funds to people and doing amazing projects. But it's a harder time right now.
Maybe we would have had more time to plan.
Yes.
And, um, do some things.
Yeah. So really thinking, you know, fall. But these first two things, you know, what, what, I've been, again, I sent you guys some links on the implicit bias, um, the healthcare workshop that went through the Department of Labor. I do have some like stats that they, um, from their slides that I can share. As well as just finding a number of organizations that we can also let the community know about, like right now, like this community conversations, the sister-to-sister women's healthcare initiative, really supporting women defined. The community and physicians are, that are going to service them in ways that will be, you know, respectful and together and all that jazz. So, um, and plus this health in her hue. These are digital platforms connecting black women, um, with women of color and, um, um, incompetent healthcare providers in your area. So, you know, is this symposium, is it about sharing this information with people? Is this about, you know, how, what do we wanna, how do we want to put that all together? And I don't really know. I'm just bringing it to the table for all of us to put our minds together of what can be beneficial.
Well, I think we had a good demonstration just a little bit ago. I, you know, I, I know a lot about that organization. I have for years, but very impressed with this woman and what she has to say and, 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 uh, and some new terms. So I, uh, yeah, valuable, valuable information for people.
She's done a lot of work. People just don't really know.
Right.
She's done a lot of work and I think her first big experience was out at Head Start. Uh, all, a lot of those mothers or families did not know that you needed the dental care before the baby is born. And so she brought that information to, uh, the Head Start program. And, um, that's how I met Tammy. And she has all, and then she formed this dental, uh, program for pregnant moms. And so, you know, she's just always been out there and there was no charge for them to come and get examined and for her to give them help on what to do be, after during their sixth week of pregnancy because the dent, the teeth start to form. So it's, it's been a lot. She's done a lot of work. A lot of work.
Yeah. She has a wonderful approach. I just felt so comfortable with her.
Right.
Very nice person. She tried to get me on that boat race out there. When they're in the port. So I don't swim, girl. She's really quite a massive, still don't swim. But she, she's always giving.
So then even just the, this, that she's new in her position with the Women's Care Center and my, my, maybe the dialogue that, that maybe they're all working on the same programs. How is it beneficial in your program or?
There's two alike. There's the doula and this program that she spoke about and, and they're crossing.
So then how might they communicate about that at a symposium?
Then we're gonna have to work with Dune Brook to see what we can, how we can work together.
Yeah.
Cause we have a Hispanic, uh, girl that does the doula for the Hispanic population here.
Oh, did you sign up for anything?
Be very careful because they don't talk to everybody.
I asked you because I wasn't.
So, so yeah, so those are, so we got in a way potentially, uh, those two committees and I'll, I'll reach out to you on email to, to kind of set up what the, the timing or, you know, how you can, can work or, and also any of the research that I've discovered, um, thus far.
We just had a program here to be announced. If I can get that video and send it to you. Well, it was on health. I haven't seen so many. I can't be here.
Yeah.
But I'll, I'll see if I can send it to you.
Great.
Lots of information.
Great. And so, yeah, if you want to be on one of those subcommittees, if you have the time. Great. So let's, there we have, we have that. So now we're on to.
Naomi Anderson.
Naomi Anderson Project.
Okay. The unveiling is this Saturday at 2:00 PM at Charles R. Westcott Park. It, there's going to be a ceremony about a half an hour long, including the unveiling of, um, a plaque since the sculpture is out there for everybody to see already. So, but we're going to cover a plaque and unveil that. The sculptor is going to unveil that. And we have speakers, um, from all of the, um, partner organizations like NAACP and the Lubesnik Center for the Arts, um, the, um, Michigan City, um, Public Art Committee and, um, Unity Foundation. And they're going to, and then our biggest funders and sponsors. And they're each gonna speak for two minutes.
Two minute.
Limit. So, so this is supposed to last a half an hour. And then immediately after that ends, we're going to, the reception at the Lubesnik Center for the Arts begins and, um, and so everybody is welcome, is invited to that. And we are a major sponsor, the Women's Commission, because we donated $5,000 and that was one of the largest donations that we received.
Who's speaking for the Women's Commission?
From.
Who's speaking from here? Anybody from this committee is speaking?
No. That, uh, it's like the much, much bigger donations are those that are speaking.
Well, Bonnie, you're actually giving, uh, a part of the welcome though, right?
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
Yes. I'm, I'm doing a lot of talking there.
So then we're represented.
And we have two poets, um, local poets, um, black women who are going to do readings of poems that they wrote about Naomi. Karnessa Carnes is one of them. And she's also going to do, um, a reading of one of Naomi's speeches. Naomi Anderson. So, um, and, and it's very effective to see that. And then the other, the other woman is a young woman who is in college at Spelman College. Um, her name is Ming Washington. And she contacted us last week and asked if we would, if she would write a poem, would we allow her to read it at this? And she's, she came, she flew home yesterday just for this and wrote the poem yesterday and it's fabulous. So.
That's amazing.
Um, yeah. So that's going to be very, uh, very powerful.
Did she tell you?
Pardon?
She's written a book too. Karnessa.
Oh, Karnessa. Oh, no, I didn't know that. Yeah.
She presented at one of our breast cancer events.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, we, we need it.
Yeah. So we need to go. So, um, no commissioner comments this evening. Thank you guys so much. Um, and we'll see you in April. But I'll be in touch with email for the subcommittees. Thank you.